Good evening, everyone. We'll now start the Subcommittee on Conference that will be held on Monday, October 18th, 6:00 PM. This is a Subcommittee on Conference. The following matter will be discussed. Discuss the order that the Chelsea City Council hereby expressly disproves of the 317,422,620,000 borrowing and debt authorized on September 9th by 2021 by the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational School District Committee for the purpose of paying costs of designing, engineering, constructing, and equipping the new Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational School and related athletic facilities, and expressly does not authorize the payment of any share of the district's debt for this purpose. Officials invited to attend the Subcommittee meeting, all members of the Chelsea City Council, City Manager Tom Ambrosino, Superintendent Almi Albetta, Superintendent David DiBari, City Solicitor Cheryl Ann Watson. At this time, the Click Call to Roll.
Counselor Vito.
Counselor Avnieta.
Present.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Vega Maldonado. Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Here.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Present.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight members present. Ever call them, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. At this time, I'll invite the City Manager to make his introductory remarks on the order and anything to say following his letter that was sent to the City Council on the subject matter.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I will be brief. My position is laid out pretty clearly in the letter that I sent to you on September 21st. But in essence, I am not opposed to the building of a new high school for a Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational District. It is, it's clear that a new high school is needed, but I oppose the way the school is going to be funded. It is funded exclusively by, for the district communities, the number of students that you send to the school. And Chelsea sends a lot of kids to that school, usually either the most or the second most in the district. Usually it's Chelsea and Revere who are vying for that position. This current, this last enrollment that we've seen, we send 238 students to the VoC. But what it means is that we're paying a significant share of this school, almost $57 million of the remaining $176 million balance that the district has to come up with after taking into account the Massachusetts School Building Authority's grant. And it's simply unaffordable for the city of Chelsea to have to bond that amount of money over 30 years. The cost to the city of Chelsea annually for the next 30 years would be approximately $1.9 million a year, over and above what we're already paying. Understand, we can only raise every year under Proposition 2.5, $1.7 million. So committing to this debt would mean that every single year for the next 30 years, virtually every dollar that we can raise, every new tax dollar, will be going to this one project. And there will be nothing, not a dime left, for the city of Chelsea to cover any of its other costs, including normal salary increases, normal operating expense increases, all of the other initiatives that we have been doing for the last few years. We will have no room whatsoever to do any of that. For that reason, I tell you, this is unaffordable in its current financial construct to the city of Chelsea, and that is why I am advocating that you vote no.
Thank you. Any City Councils have any questions for the City Manager at this moment before I call anyone else? None. At this time, I'll ask Superintendent Almi Albetta if you have any comments and remarks you want to share with the City Council, including any, any actions that was taken by our colleagues on the school committee.
Good evening, City Council and President Avnieta. We do, can you hear me?
No, speak louder, thank you.
I'm sorry, the mask too. I agree with our City Manager, Mr. Ambrosino, and the recommendation put forth. At our last school committee meeting, the school committee did vote in support of a no vote and recommendation of City Manager, Mr. Ambrosino. And so I'll just leave it at that.
Do any of my colleagues have any questions for the Superintendent? No. Can I just ask one question? The number of students saying 238, what is that? What is, how many years you've, do you recall going backwards what the average enrollment is for the school itself?
The enrollment has actually peaked a little bit over time because when there were available seats, Northeast, they did make available seats to Chelsea students. So it has increased a little, a little each year. So we're still peaking at about 238 right now. And if you think about it, that's equivalent to about $3 million that is leaving the city every year in our general fund budget. But we have encouraged students to attend Northeast VoTech because we want our students to have that opportunity.
There's been talk, discussion that there's a normal allocation number that Chelsea receives for a number of seats, but that Chelsea actually supersedes that because maybe other communities are not taking up those seats. Can you say, what is the normal or allocation per the agreement with Northeast VoC for how many students are supposed to be going to Northeast VoC as a right versus as a surplus?
Yeah, I'd have to get that information for you, but what I do know is that because other communities have not filled their seats, Northeast has given Chelsea the opportunity to fill seats with Chelsea students.
Counselor Robinson?
I think when the school initially started for Chelsea, I think we had 20 kids in the 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th. So it'd be about 80 kids that we had access to Northeast VoC. When other communities couldn't fill their slots, they came to Chelsea. I kind of look at it that, at some point, we kind of saved the school, and now we're being penalized because we, now we're at the, at the peak where we got 238 students that, they're asking us to pony out this amount of money to us.
Okay. Superintendent, any other comments before I call the Northeast?
I will say to my friends at Northeast VoTech, we are super supportive of building a school, but at the same time, for the reasons that our City Manager has just mentioned, I cannot support that as well. We do want to support in every way. We're grateful for taking Chelsea students, but at the same time, it comes at, this will come at a great cost to our residents.
At this time, I'll ask Superintendent David DiBari to please address the City Council.
So my name is David DiBari, Superintendent of Northeast Metro Tech. I brought with me tonight my Finance Director, Jay Pecone, and our Financial Consultant, Charles Lyons, that I hope the committee will consider them speaking as well because I'll be honest with you, when it comes to the dollars and the facts and the figures, there's nobody better than these guys, and that includes me as well. So in 1994 was the last time I was in this room. I was being appointed as a teacher to the Chelsea Public Schools. My first teaching job, one of the greatest days of my adult life up until that point. I have children now, so I could never say that and get away with it. A lot of what I do today was formed by the experiences I had, primarily at the Chelsea Middle Alternative School. And it was there when we worked so hard to find a way for our students to connect to an education that they found interesting, and also an education in a career path that was in their reach. What makes Northeast such an important school to the city of Chelsea is the success rate of our graduates. I've learned all about the challenges and the obstacles that our students, and I do say "our" students when I'm talking about the Chelsea students, not just the Northeast Chelsea students, have to obtain success. And there is no better direct way to success for our students who do not fit in with the college track than to have an education at Northeast Metro Tech. So on one side, I completely hear the financial situation is not great for any city or town. I met with the Town Manager six years ago to prepare for this project. Six years, and I said, "This is going to be a challenge." And I would work with all of our City Managers and Mayors any way I could to facilitate the financial necessities of this building project. We met every year since, or we reached out at a minimum throughout the years, various breakfasts, various letters, pamphlets. Unfortunately, I, I did not, you know, receive much feedback over those six years about where we are right now. I was very happy I watched projects throughout the city over those years happen, ones that, you know, as an educator, I am biased, but were less important to the future of the children of Chelsea than I felt Northeast was. So I had the feeling that we were on a road to success and that we were going to together make this happen and make this reality. Unfortunately, I received the same letter you all did, as did many, many other people that were carbon copied on, unbeknownst to me. So I think what I'm really asking for tonight is for you not to vote tonight. There's still time. We had 60 days from the bond for you to make a decision. I know you have another couple of weeks. To say it's a challenge to walk in and give a presentation to a committee that's already heard, I'm sure, multiple times why we can't afford this from various people, I would just like a couple of weeks after this, I'd like to invite you up to the school, not just to see why we were considered probably the poorest facility in the state of Massachusetts in regards to a public school, but also to see the kids from Chelsea, from Revere, from the Gateway Communities, see the success they're receiving from Northeast and from a vocational education. So with that said, I ask for an open mind, okay? I ask for an opportunity for Mr. Lyons to present a few things, because Northeast is dying. This isn't a case of, wouldn't it be great if we had a new school? How awesome it would be to have all these new classrooms. Northeast will have to close down in the near future, permanently. And the students who are at Northeast, when that happens, where are they going to end up? I don't know if anyone's thought of that. The future students who want to come to Northeast, when it's closed, where will they go? Are we just going to say Chelsea no longer wants their students to be educated with a vocational technical education? Maybe. That's a tragedy, tragedy if that happens. And I base that purely on the success of the students who come from Chelsea who go to Northeast. My family's from Chelsea. They lived for generations on Crescent Avenue. I grew up in Revere. I can tell you, had I not gone to Northeast, I wouldn't be here tonight, and I wouldn't be anyplace very pretty either. I don't get a raise, a promotion, anything from coming here and fighting for this new building, except the feeling that our students, the people who live in Chelsea and Revere especially, because that's where my heart is, have an opportunity to be successful. I get the dollars and cents. I'm not trying to tell Chelsea they have more money than what they make out to be or vice versa, okay? A letter was written to me. We did respond to that letter. But I owe it to the families who I have to receive phone calls from because their children didn't get accepted to Northeast. I know La Collaborativa is here, and I know they support the Town Manager in Chelsea more than anybody, and they might get up and say, "We support the Town Manager tonight as well." But that's okay, because they get the same phone calls that I get. They get the calls from parents who know this is their son and daughter's final opportunity to get back on the right track, because not everyone's cut out for college. If I thought that Chelsea could do it better, or even close to as good, by putting shops in your schools, I would be all on board. In fact, I met with Almi when she received her position, and she was training. Unfortunately, to run a vocational program in school is very challenging. You can't just pick it up and throw a couple in the basement of a high school and say, "We'll do it just as well as they can." It's not that easy. So I beg you to reconsider the motion you have in front of you. And I beg you to look closer at your finances and see that maybe it's not as black and white as not having the money. Because there are two things. There's not having the money and not prioritizing what you want to spend on that money to include a vocational education. Couple of years ago, my son, my wife came home from the dentist, and they said, "Your son, he needs braces immediately." And I said, "We don't have the money for braces. What do you mean? I thought he didn't need braces till he was a teenager. He's only 11, 12 years old. We can't afford it. We don't have the money." What were my options? To let my son's teeth fall out? Did I have the money? It wasn't part of my financial plan, but I found the money. And my son got braces, and his teeth are straight, and you know what? We survived. And that may just be a small anecdote, but it's something that I'm asking to consider. So if you may, or if it's the will of the body, I would like to have our Financial Consultant, Mr. Lyons, report to you on some of the, to respond to some of the elements that were in the initial letter, and also some of the questions that I heard here tonight. But I will respond to one quickly.
So the idea is, maybe I didn't explain the structure here.
Sure.
So it is, this is the only form that we actually are able to go back and forth with questions and such. We do have a regularly scheduled meeting at 7:00 PM. So under that timeline, we gave you, hopefully, the whole hour to, you know, make your presentation, and then if there's any back and forth between us and the City Council and the, and your team. So I would say, allow your team to try to make its presentation as quickly as possible so there may be time to do some Q and A afterwards.
Sure.
And also take any comments from the public at that moment. But you have, let me see, 6:22, so you basically have another half hour before this meeting is going to be adjourned.
Perfect, thank, and we have 12 cities and towns, and every, every board is different, so I apologize. When I saw just my name, the last town I was in said, "If you're not on the agenda, you can't speak unless you're a citizen." So that, that's great news. So if I could call Mr. Lyons up, that would be great. And again, this is Charles Lyons, Lyons Consulting.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. President and members of the City Council, it's a pleasure for me to be here. And just to give you a little background, I'm a retired Superintendent from Shawshine Valley Technical High School in Billerica, Massachusetts, where I served as Superintendent Director for 28 years, having retired a few years ago. And I've also worked with your talented Town Manager for many years in municipal government, where I was in Arlington Selectment for about 24 years, and served in multiple capacities. I shared with you some old material from 20 years ago that I found in my basement, just to give you an indication of where my heart is when it comes to the varying challenges and differences amongst communities in terms of revenues and in terms of the ability to meet its citizenry demands. And I completely understand. There are different challenges based upon a number of economic factors in each community. I've worked with the Superintendent and other Superintendents around the state who have to rebuild aging vocational regional school districts that were all created about 50 years ago, and they're expensive. And they're expensive to rebuild. And I've worked with your municipal leader here, Mr. Ambrosino, trying to get the state to kick in more money to reduce the cost to member communities, and we're continuing that effort. But here's where we are. This, this school district has the greatest or the largest waitlist in the state. They had over 800 eighth graders apply this year. They only really were able to accept about 330 students. Children are clamoring for high-quality, multi-program vocational technical school districts. Mr. DiBari and his school committee, along with the Mass School Building Authority, took a look at 40 different options, and they're recommending one option, which is the most educationally sound, financially responsible option for all 12 communities to consider. And that's where we are. The unfortunate reality is that the cost to those communities totals $176 million. But the other reality, it's the largest Mass School Building Authority grant in the Mass School Building Authority's history, of somewhere in the neighborhood of $146 million. And if you were living in the Minuteman School District, which just opened a year ago, or you were living at Cape Cod Technical down in Hiwich, which just opened two weeks ago, your actual cost per student for building those facilities would be a lot more than what's being proposed to the member communities within the Northeast Metropolitan Regional School District. Let me give you an example. There's a $100 million price tag on Minuteman Tech for the communities that comprise that district for approximately 628 students. The $176 million price tag for this school to the 12-member communities is about $50,000 less per pupil. And then the issue becomes, well, what's fear in terms of which community pays? I do seminars on Chapter 70 and have done it for a number of years, and I can tell you that if a Chelsea student goes to Northeast, the operational cost per pupil assessment to the city of Chelsea is a little over $4,000. And to nine of the 12 communities, the assessment per pupil's a little over $17,000 per pupil. The state uses the largest of the state Chapter 70 formula to recognize the financial ability of communities to pay operational cost. But like water sewer debt imposed by the Mass Water Resource Authority, everybody pays the same debt service. It's in the regional agreement. It's been the state statutes for years. It incentivized the creation of this district back in 1966. It brought 12 communities together, from wealthy communities like Winchester and Redding, and poorer communities like Revere and Chelsea, and it created one of the 26 best examples of regional collaboration in this country to provide high-quality, public vocational technical education for children. I grew up in Arlington, and I'm proud of that. But we used to stick kids in the basement of local high school in Arlington, and we offered four vocational programs when I first joined its school committee back in 1972. And it took local leaders from Arlington and other communities to form a different regional vocational technical school district. And so what's being recommended to you tonight is to say, "Well, we can't afford it." And that's a decision I respect. If that's the recommendation of your Town Manager or City Manager, that you can't afford it, that's okay. But as I indicated, there are over 800 students who applied to that school district. What happened in the Minuteman District, and is going to happen in other multiple districts around the state, is those communities that don't want to rebuild the school district or participate can withdraw from the school district. And that's, has to be initiated by the City Council. But what I want you to think about before you take that type of action, or before you implement any recommendation tonight, is what are you going to replace it with? Every vocational technical school district around Northeast is maxed out in terms of student interest. You're boarded by the city of Boston, and you're boarded by the Atlantic Ocean, and you don't have a lot of options. And you don't want to go back to the time where urban children didn't have the same access to terrific regional vocational technical schools that offered 20 different options for students to explore and participate. The richness of Northeast Vocational Technical High School, the richness is the composition of its student body. That's the richness of that school district. You're in the City Council, Mr. Robinson, I know you've been along, around here a long time, and I remember you from many Mass Municipal Association meetings. You don't want to decide tonight to take that option away. I was visited at Shawshine Tech by two sons of Chelsea in the 28 years I was there. The first one was Jay Ash. He was the assistant basketball coach. And he came to Shawshine and he said, Charlie, he said, "Nobody will let Chelsea join an athletic contact, athletic league where our kids can be competitive with other teams." They were in the Greater Boston League, and it was very difficult for them. My athletic directors in the Commonwealth Conference voted not to allow Chelsea in. And when Jay told me the story, I called every Superintendent, and we reversed the vote, and we had the wealth of Chelsea kids participating in the athletic conference with vocational technical schools for the next 15 years. It enhanced the opportunity not only for Chelsea students, but for kids from Billerica and Burlington and Bedford as well. Second person who came from Chelsea to Shawshine walked in the front door, and he said, "I can only stay here for 45 minutes." And three and a half hours later, Tom Birmingham walked out the door, and he said, "What a wonderful place for children." I urge you, as requested by the Superintendent, to visit Northeast VoTech between now and Election Day or November. Election Day or November. You can always vote to support the town city manager's recommendation. If you do that by November 8th, you've met the threshold. But just open your eyes for the next three weeks and give yourself the opportunity to experience the true value the regional vocational technical education offers and has offered Chelsea kids for a number of years. With all due respect to my good friend, and he's done a fabulous job here as your city manager, with all due respect, we've tried to structure this debt so that it doesn't impact our communities until fiscal '26. We are into fiscal '22 right now. You're not going to have to pay a significant bill for another three and a half years. If you vote tonight or soon, this school has gas leaks. This school is in dangerous state of disrepair, and even the city manager has agreed with us on that. Largest state grant in the state's history. We're working night and day, asking our legislators to give us more dollars. We did the same thing with the Boston Harbor project. We got Tippin, Neil, and Ted Kennedy to give us a billion dollars in federal aid. It's still very costly. But that project is assessed on usage. The debt service for this project is assessed on usage. That's the way regionalization works. You know, I've had a lot of great experiences in my life. And one of the most telling ones was when I was on the Board of Directors of the National League of Cities. And I sat across a friend from Michigan who lamented about the environmental challenges the city has. And he said, what are you guys doing in Boston? I said, well, we're cleaning up Boston Harbor, and it's going to be the jewel of the nation. And he said, well, we don't have the money to do that. He's been retired for a while, but he was the mayor of Flint, Michigan. Think about this, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. Thank you.
Well, that's the idea. I was going to start opening up questions. So again, so at this time, we'll just start to ask some questions back and forth between the city council and the members of the Northeast team. How was the bill basically divided? You know, what was the basis of how all the communities decided what would cover, how much each community would cover?
It's decided by regional agreement, and it's based strictly on a per pupil basis. You don't go out and do the bond issue. The regional school district does the bond issue. And it's given you a projection based upon a stable enrollment. But the cost of the building will be done strictly based upon the number of students divided into about $10 million a year for the next 30 years, beginning in fiscal '26. But it will be done based on a per student attendance basis. And that's how it's stipulated in the regional agreement that has been in existence for the last 50 years.
So is there a number of how many students are capped each year? Enrollment, is there an enrollment cap each year?
So the enrollment is based on your percentage of eighth grade students as compared to the other 11 districts. So if we took all the eighth graders in the 12 districts, and you had 10% of those students, then your enrollment would be capped at 10%. So like somebody mentioned earlier, if there are available seats, because not all cities and towns reach their cap, then they are divided amongst the cities and towns that have a waitlist.
So the bill is based on the 10% or is it a higher amount?
The actual amount.
So not on the 10%?
Correct.
So my question is, there are times when, and that's the confusing part here, is what I think, is that you're saying it's based on 10% of the school enrollment, but there are opportunities where, for example, let's say Wakefield, isn't taking advantage of or doesn't fill the seats that it's supposed to, correct?
Correct.
All right. But the assessment that we have is based on what Chelsea is currently sending to the Northeast Voc.
Yep.
The assessment will change, just so we're real clear in this, okay? If we were going to borrow $100 million or $200 million today, over a 30-year period, much like a mortgage on a house, your share of that assessment will be based and change fluctuate yearly based upon the percentage of students from your community that are attending that school on October 1st every year. So, Mr. Chairman, so Mr. President, so if the following year, when we go from, right now, we have 1,281 students as of last October. When we go up 100 students a year to get to 1,600, the assumption is, and we've shared this with Tom and others and all the other managers, the assumption is your percentage of the whole will stay the same because it's been pretty stable. You've gone from, I know the superintendent doesn't have these numbers, but you've gone from anywhere from 270 to 237, but you're around 250. And so the assumption is that number will stay static. And the rationale for that is because of the significant waitlist. When you have 800 kids applying and you allocate the seats, as David said, based upon your current school enrollment as a percentage of the whole, it should remain pretty stable. But it will be done on a per pupil basis.
What happens if there's dramatic shift in population in, say, 10 years from now? The town of Saguas is sending up the 238, and Chelsea's enrollment drops. Your cost per student, but the bond itself, did the bond change?
Your share of the bond issue will go down. Your share, if that happened, Saguas' cost would go up, and your share of the bond issue for that year would go down. The bond issue cost, if you look at the material that we presented to you, and if you flip over, for example, to the second page, and this is put together by Hilltop Securities, which is the same financial advisor that the city of Chelsea has used. When you add all these figures up, this assumes a stable assessment to the communities. But if you look on page one, it shows you on the right-hand side, the total bonded indebtedness each year.
We had several. So which document are we talking about?
It's a three-page document. It's entitled Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational Technical School District in Wakefield, Mass. It shows you the three borrowings. And on the right-hand side, the fifth column, it shows you the total bonded indebtedness for that year. And so that number, for example, in FY '23, it'll be $1,882,000 or something like that, $62,000. That's divided by 1,281 students. Your share of that is based upon the number of students from Chelsea going to Northeast. The last figure in the right column will not increase. And we think, by the way, it's high because we use the 4% interest rate on the bonds, which we think is high, so we think this figure will be lower. We use a 3% figure on the bond anticipatory note, which will be issued so we can do site work next year. So this would be your presumed, your share of that would be based upon the students attending the school the year prior to those costs being assessed.
What is the bond rating? What is the projected bond rating?
We're using a 4% projected rate. If it's 2%, that would significantly reduce the cost. If you look at the bonded indebtedness.
My question is, each community has its own bond rating?
No.
We have, Moody, for example, calls us, I think you put it in your information air, each community has a bond rating. We're rated, I think it's a triple A.
You're double A.
Double A. We're double A. So what is, and so I'm asking, what is the rating of Northeast Voc?
The rating will not be assessed until prior to the school district going out and doing a borrowing. But I can tell you from my experience, it's based upon the bond ratings of the membered communities. So you have five communities here that I think are triple A, and everybody else is double A or higher. And so the bond rating that either Moody's or Standard and Poor's will assign Northeast Voc Tech will principally be based upon the collective bond, the bond ratings of all the communities. That's why we provided that information. We think it's going to be at least double A. But we can't, since we're not going to do a bond issue for another couple of years, we're going to do a ban the first year, we think it still will be double A, at least.
Counselor Brown?
You spoke of the legislators that they had some conversation. Can you give us an update of what their conversation is towards the project and if there's any conversation regarding how much you're asking them for funding?
We fortunately got some support from Bob de Leo before he left. And we ensured through the FY '21 budget that Northeast would have the highest reimbursement rate it could have had, even if you go back to 2014. So the reimbursement rate that we currently have is 77% of all eligible project cost. Because of that candy work done by the legislators, that provided an additional $25 million. We went from 62% for eligible project cost to 77%. The highest you can ever get is 80% from the MSBA. The unfortunate reality is the MSBA caps a lot of things. I'll give an example. They assign the same per pupil technology cost to a regional Voc Tech school at $1,200 a pupil, the same amount they assign for an elementary school kid. So because of that, the actual reimbursement rate, and they cap site costs, they cap construction costs per square foot, because of that, the actual reimbursement rate goes down to 44%. And so Mr. DeBarry, along with two other regional superintendents, Diamond Regional's got a $300 million project for 1,500 students. Bristol Plymouth has a $306 million project for 1,450 students. They've written a wonderful letter we've shared with your city manager complaining that the MSBA methodology needs to be modernized. And we've shared that with our friends from the Alliance of Vocational Technical Education. And with them, we filed a comprehensive piece of legislation. It had two vocational experts to the Mass School Building Authority Advisory Committee. And we've also filed legislation to give you some flexibility locally. So we're doing everything we can, but I don't know if they're going to add, right now, we can't assume, sir, a nickel more than the $141 million we presently have.
So does that do anything to a reduction in the commitment you're asking for Chelsea?
I'm sorry?
Would that bottom line you just spoke of, without any other additional money, what would be the bottom line with Chelsea? Will it stay the same?
It would stay the same. But if we were successful, obviously, we're not going to stop fighting. If we were successful by getting the legislation to put more money into MSBA, to maybe expand the amount of money for vocational technical education, we obviously would share any penny we receive by reducing the local cost to all membered communities. That's exactly what our intent is. But to just say no tonight puts this project in a standstill.
I'm sorry, does it really put it into a standstill or does it put it to the voters?
Well, it puts it to the voters because one community says no. And so all I'm suggesting, if one community says no, give us some time. If one community says no, it compromises the $25 million we got from the legislature in additional money. And it could force a vote, and the vote could lose. And then if the vote loses, where do the children go? That's the issue. This is the plan, the best plan we can provide for you at this point in time. But it doesn't mean we're not going to be super vigilant to try to get more funding to reduce your cost and to reduce the cost similarly to every member of this district.
Yeah, Mr. President, my last comment, I just think it's awful, awful commitment for us as the smallest community, and we would have to pay one of the heftiest investments of it. And again, I appreciate what you talked about when you had the shops in the bottom of the schools. I went to High Park High, we had the same thing. You had four, not 20. So for the sake of time, thank you for your answering the questions.
Counselor Garcia, Counselor Vido, and then Counselor Zabat following. So Counselor Garcia.
I'll try to be as brief as possible, and this question is mostly directed to either city manager Tom Ambrosino or our superintendent, Abada. I guess the most succinct, and I know this is throwing a lot at you, but if we withdraw from being a part of this school district, what is our plan B, if any?
I haven't even given a thought to withdrawal. That's not going to be triggered by this vote. What's going to be triggered by this vote is a vote of the district. And if the vote passes, we'll have to come up with this money somehow. As difficult a financial predicament that will put us in, we will have no choice but to do that. If the vote fails, I think the district will have to get together because it would mean that a majority of the residents of the whole district did not want this school to move forward, and it'd have to come up with a different approach. Maybe it is a less expensive new building. Maybe it is something else. I'm saying to you, under the current formula, Chelsea cannot afford its share of this $317, 000 building. It's not like we are prioritizing other spending over this, splitting a pie and trying to keep a little more of the pie for ourselves. This is a situation where the entire pie, our entire Proposition Two and a Half increase, will have to go to Northeast Voc. That will be the only expenditure we can make out of every dollar we can raise under Proposition Two and a Half. And I'm telling you, that is inequitable. That is not happening in Winchester. It is not happening in North Reading. It is not happening in Stonem. It is not happening in these other districts that will gladly pass this. It's happening in Chelsea.
Thank you. Superintendent, do you?
What I will say is there's really not much mention of equity here. And in many cases, equity does not mean equal. And so I just want to point that out. Equity does not mean equal. And the poorest community will be taxed the most, and that's where I have a fundamental problem. If there were a case where our students would drop out of this, you better bet. I would have a plan in place. I have started an early college before that was tied to a Voc Tech and a previous district that I worked in. I am not afraid to start schools up from the ground up. And this community, we would work together to figure something out for our children.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm all set.
Counselor Vido.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a couple of questions, and it's essentially the same question that we asked the city manager and the superintendent, but to Northeast. If we have contributed, well, actually, hold on. I guess what I want to ask is, you asked earlier. I guess what I want to ask is, you asked earlier, if we don't send our kids there, what are we going to replace it with? And I guess what I'm asking, what I want to ask you is, if Chelsea can't pay this, what are you going to replace the program with? Like, I'm asking the same question in return.
Well, first of all, I, I don't want to take any liberties here, so I'm going to try to deal with this. It would solve the enrollment prob, problem at Northeast. If Chelsea wanted to go on its own, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have, they wouldn't have to deny 60% of the kids that are applying there. They'd be able to accept more students. It might open the option for another community to join that might not be in a regional vocational technical school district, if you felt the price was too high. The equity issue, with all due respect, the biggest challenge we're having is talking to your member communities, and they're saying, "How come Chelsea only pays $4,200 per pupil to send a kid to Northeast, and we're paying $17,000?" It, 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 it leaves that argument, and it goes someplace else. So the answer to your question is, a no vote and a withdrawal by Chelsea would put us back to the drawing table. But because of so many students wanting to go there, it would, it would, it would lessen the diversity at Northeast Voc Tech and take that opportunity away from Chelsea students. But it would actually lessen the waitlist that Northeast presently has. Or maybe they take, you know, a floor off its design plans and builds a smaller school to accommodate the communities that still want to belong. That's what happened at the Minuteman district. Minuteman went from 16 communities to nine. And those that didn't want to pay the bill withdrew. And that was, you shouldn't penalize 10 communities, because one community doesn't want to pay. And so that's the logic.
We also shouldn't penalize the, the, the largest community that's actually contributing to your success rate that you were speaking to.
Well, no, I'm not, I'm not saying, the kids are fabulous.
But I mean, we could go back and forth, right?
Well, I don't want to go back and forth.
Yeah, exactly.
The point is, it's based upon the number of kids that attend the school. It's not based upon the size of the community. And, and it also takes into consideration your total increase in tax levy capacity, not just 2.5%.
Okay. My other question is for this, I believe it was the superintendent that spoke earlier, said to give it 60 days and for us to keep an open mind. And I'm just curious about what intentions do you have to do in those 60 days to come back with something that might look different for us? If we're going to go and do, you know, have our open mind, what are you doing in that timeframe?
Sure. So like I mentioned earlier, this started for me six years ago, and that's why it's amazing to hear tonight for the first time in six years that the issue is actually the formula. So had the town manager told me six years ago, as well as the other communities involved, that the issue was the way that the percentages are divided up, I would have joined him at the state house, at the MSBA, at the Department of Education, and I would have fought that fight with you all. Because I didn't create the formula, there are a lot of things I don't agree with, with the formula. That was what was in place when I started my position. And I vowed to do anything I could to get this school built for the kids, like I had said, of Chelsea and Revere. I have been at that state house pounding doors. Charlie and I have a, a mask that we wear when we walk by MSBA, because we put so much pressure on them to increase the state's allotment to this project, so that the impact on a city like Chelsea would be minimized. Secondly, when we talk about new plans, some of you have been through the MSBA formula before. The MSBA dictates the project we do. So when we met with the MSBA, we shared the price tag of what it would cost to do various, you know, renovations and additions and such. The MSBA found that this was the most amenable to a positive educational plan, as well as the cost on dollars.
So respectfully, there's really not much you can do in those 60 days, is what you're saying?
In.
Because we're kind of, you feel handcuffed. Is that what you're saying?
To make changes to the project?
Yeah, correct. Like, so you're asking us to keep an open mind, but what's going to happen in those 60 days to make us change our?
Well, there's only two weeks left, so it's not 60 days left.
So you said that earlier, you said, "Don't vote, you have 60 days."
Well, you have 60 days from the time that we sent you the letter saying that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I apologize for that confusion.
Okay, okay, yeah, so I was a little confused. My apologies, I can't see, so I'm kind of winging this on the fly.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I sure have been clear.
All right. I, I guess the other thing I just wanted to say was, I was a former student of Northeast, and my apologies, I did not contribute to your success rate, but that I do know that many of our students have, you know, many of our kids are ELL students, and so, you know, when you, English is your second language, they work better with their hands, there's more opportunity for our kids, and it just feels kind of inequitable, as the superintendent said, to penalize a district like Chelsea that is contributing to the success rate that I didn't help build, but that, and it just feels a bit inequitable. And just on principle alone, I, I just, it just feels kind of uncomfortable to support something like this, but I appreciate what you guys do in, in your presentation here today. And the other thing is, Mr. President, I know that it's 7 o'clock, but if there's any way that members of the school committee are here, that they can speak, I, I, I know, I don't know if there are other counselors, but I would love to hear from anyone.
They'll, they'll have their time during the public speaking portion of our meeting.
Okay, okay, that works, too.
Last comment, question for, nope, okay. Counselor Robinson?
So, Mr. Barry, the 800 kids who are on the waiting list, how many of those kids are from Chelsea?
There's not 800 on the waiting list, 800 applied, 330 were accepted. I can't tell you offhand, I apologize. I can get back to you on that.
And is there any particular reason that when this project started years ago, the 12 communities that we're in, why wasn't the, each community split across the board as they share for the new school?
Yep. As I wasn't alive, I honestly can't tell you.
And the number 317 million is a big nut. What can you take out of that number to lessen the load for a city like Chelsea?
Sure. So, so the number is high because of the high student population. I think the real number is how much it costs per student for the city of Chelsea.
Well, it gets back to my point about the number of students that we had in the beginning that we were responsible for. And when the other communities didn't send students, we got those slots, and we're kind of being penalized. And I look at it like we saved the school by sending our students there.
Right.
And now that we're being penalized by saying, you know, now the cost is just going to be prohibited to the city of Chelsea.
Right. So, you know, one thing I, I've got to tell, because I, you know, I've got to say to you, because, you know, there is, there've been some passionate things spoken. If we did not have those extra seats, I can tell you, there would be endless amounts of families devastated, because they didn't get the opportunity through those open seats. And like I said earlier, I get the calls when they don't get accepted, and I, luckily, I get the, you know, accolades when they do get accepted. I think it would be tragic if we had the same amount of seats than we did when the school opened. There would be so many missed opportunities for your residents.
Thank you. At this time, it's already past 7 o'clock. We will now end this meeting, and we'll have a two-minute break and start our regularly scheduled 7:00 PM meeting.
Thank you very much.